Good evening. We'll get started for the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 11th. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Polgar is absent this evening. Commissioner Reddick?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Benjamin?
Right here.
And Chair Holt?
Here.
Thanks.
Next item is the approval of minutes for May 28, 2019. Do we have any discussion, changes, or motion?
So, I had to recuse myself from the goat grazing item, but I can, so I'm happy to abstain from the whole thing if you have a majority or a quorum that can make the decision on that, but if you have to recuse from some, and I have to recuse from others.
Correct. I was gone for a portion of that evening, so I would have to recuse from some.
Staff would like you to go ahead and approve, or if you could approve, consider the first, everything except for the goat grazing program and the two school projects. So go ahead and look at everything else in there with Pasta Moon, and then with Vice Chair Benjamin recusing on this vote for the goat grazing program, and then with Chair Holt recusing, well, not recusing, but you were not present for the two items at the high school. So, we think you need to do three things here.
Got it.
We apologize, but if Sarah was here, we could do one swoosh, but, okay.
So I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting that are included in our packet that was the fourth, no, what was the date, May 20?
May 28.
May 28, 2019, with respect to the hearing on Pasta Moon, well, excluding the hearing on goat grazing, and, sorry, excluding, let me repeat that for the record so everybody can hear me, I apologize. I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting of May 28 with the exception of those elements of the minutes that describe the goat grazing vegetation program and those that describe the two projects that were being considered for the Cabrillo Unified School District.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our second motion would be a motion to approve the item with the goat grazing.
Yeah, I move we approve the minutes concerning the goat grazing project.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And the last would be a motion to approve the minutes for the two high school items.
I move we approve the minutes for the two high school projects.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I was absent for that portion. Okay, did we do that right? All right. The hard part is done. Okay, so now we have an opportunity for a public comment. This is for items not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, you can get up and go speak, or put in a green card. I do not have any items for, do you wish to speak on the 555 Poplar? Okay, so we'll begin to that as part of that item. This is for items not on the agenda. I don't see anybody looking to jump up, so we will close the public comment period, and we can move into our first public hearing item, new duplex at 555 Poplar Street. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Little background on the subject property itself, it was, it's part of the 1906 second addition to Arleta Park subdivision, but in 1955-
Scott, can you please just make sure to speak right into the microphone? Thank you.
1955, Caltrans purchased a portion of the property through order of condemnation to allow the construction of Cabrillo Highway. Then in 19, or 2013, the city implemented signalization of this intersection.
Excuse me, Scott, just as a point of information, the public can't hear you.
Is this, can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Sorry, thank you. So in May 2015, an application was submitted for a single-story duplex with a detached garage, and several hearings, Planning Commission adopted a resolution for denial. After that application, a new application was submitted, and in February of 2018, the Planning Commission held a study session and provided feedback on a two-story design. Two separate options were presented to the Planning Commission, and a copy of this memorandum was included as Attachment 3. Planning Commission provided feedback, and a preference over towards the tandem option for the two-story duplex. Since then, several design renditions have been reviewed by staff, and what you see, what's included with your staff report is sort of the final version. The project itself, it's a two-story duplex with tandem garage, and the new driveway includes backup areas to allow three-point turns, eliminating the need to back out onto Poplar Street. Permits requested include a coastal development permit, architectural review, a variance to encroach outside the maximum building envelope, and a parking exception. Here's the site itself, a bird's-eye view aerial photograph showing the intersection. The site is on the northeast corner of Poplar and Cabrillo Highway. Here's the site plan, and notice the extended backup area in front of the duplex. Now, the previous design that the Planning Commission saw had the footprint a little bit closer to Poplar itself. Since then, the footprint has been pushed all the way back to the 20-foot rear yard setback mark to allow for a little more room up front. Rainwater storage barrels have been added to each of the corners of the building, and the only impervious surface includes the concrete driveway and the footprint itself. Grading and drainage plan was submitted and reviewed by staff at the city. Instead of going with the more traditional subterranean detention basin, a vegetated swale has been included along the western property line. Floor plans, the second floor is on the left, first floor on the right. It's a split-level design with, you know, one unit above, one unit below. Larger units on the upper floor that includes a balcony above the garage. Notice the tandem garage parking with additional storage, and bike parking has also been sighted within each of the garages. Roof plan, notice the solar panel, solar system large enough to power both units. Here's the front elevation facing Poplar South elevation, the split garage design, west elevation facing Highway 1. And then this is the interior side, east elevation. And then this is the backyard with the covered entryway to the back. Photo renderings, notice the, this includes the fencing and the landscaping. Photo rendering with the intersection. And I've also included a, provided the chair with a color and material sample. So this is along Cabrillo Highway facing north. Now, as far as the analysis goes, the key things for the Planning Commission to consider are conformance with the local coastal program, residential design guidelines, and compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. As far as zoning goes, a variance to encroach outside the maximum building envelope has been requested, as well as a parking exception, and we feel that the findings can be made for both, given the unique site configuration along the corner and the unique curve that's along the western property line. Now, the Planning Commission, we did provide a memorandum before the meeting on, to the Planning Commission that includes some background information on the Coastal Commission staff's review of the fire training tower, and we've also included some additional findings within the resolution related to visual resource area. Please let us know if you need a few minutes to digest that additional information. So, and then I've included this slide, this is a house four blocks to the north, the White House on the top, and then I've, just as a comparison, I've included a slide, the photograph that I took yesterday. Now, our design guidelines do focus on single-family, but we feel that, you know, they do have some helpful, you know, design criteria, and, you know, it's, the design has, there are many guidelines that have, that can be selected through this that the project is in conformance with. As far as CQ goes, the project is categorically exempt for the construction of a duplex. Now, the project designer, as well as applicant's representative is here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, they're available for questions as well, so. One other thing that was included in the revised resolution, we did add a recommended condition of approval modifying the fence height, and this was in discussion with the city engineer, that this slide probably, well, it's, we've got some glare going on So we're suggesting that the transition from a six-foot solid fence to a three-foot be pushed back further, another 12 feet, to open up the front of the site a little more. So, and that condition has been included with the revised resolution.
Okay, thank you. With that, do we have any clarifying questions of staff? Commissioner Hernandez?
Through the chair. Thank you, Scott, for the presentation, and thank you for the memos responding to some of the comments that were raised. I noticed in this memo dated June 11th, you reference Exhibit A. I don't find Exhibit A attached to the documents in front of me. I do find multiple Exhibit As, not from the Coastal Commission, but from other parts of the property history. So, is there a Exhibit A?
Yes, that would actually be the Exhibit A within the resolution, so it's, you know, Attachment 1, Exhibit A, that includes the findings.
The revised.
The revised findings, so.
Which is your-
Oh, excuse me, Attachment 2, it's Exhibit A to Attachment 2.
To the memo.
To the memo.
It says Attachment 1.
Sorry about that.
Additional questions, Commissioner Benjamin?
So, I think it's probably more an ex parte communication on the way to a clarifying question. So, it may be that it's in the documents we received tonight, but I didn't see it, so, since it's part of my thinking about the project, I'm obliged to share it with the commissioners in order to provide due process. I also read the Coastal Commission staff report for the fire tower. Apparently, I wasn't the only one who did, but, and I posed a question and included the following excerpt from that Coastal Commission staff report. It said, "The project," and they're referring to the Coastside Fire Protection District Tower, "itself is located approximately 100 yards inland from Highway 1 and is thereby situated within a scenic corridor designated by Land Use Plan Policy 7-1 and Implementation Plan," and there's a reference, "as extending for 200 yards on either side of the highway. In addition, inland hillsides lie eastward of the site, which are identified as both an important visual resource and a major attribute of the city's setting by the Implementation Plan section," and there's a citation. And after some other text, it's, "The staff analysis by the Coastal Commission states, 'Although the city-approved project is not located on an upland slope, that does not mean that the ridgeline protection policies don't apply. Indeed, the LCP intent is to protect the views of the eastern hillsides, including avoiding development that projects above the ridgeline.'" And then a little further on, "In addition, the LCP makes clear that the area within 200 yards of Highway 1 is a scenic corridor to which specific requirements adhere. The city has taken the position, however, that these requirements apply only if the area is mapped on the visual resources map. Such interpretation is not adequately protective of visual resources, however." And this, these findings were adopted as part of the Coastal Commission's motion for finding of no substantial issue on the appeal, but these references to how the scenic resource is defined is part of what the Coastal Commission guidance and the canon of appeals are. And as I read the description of the evidence and port of the findings, oh, and I'll also say that the Coastal Commission in discussion found that, they acknowledged that it was momentarily obstructing ridgelines, but since it was momentary, they did not conclude that it was a significant departure from standards.
Can I just ask if there's a clarifying question here?
Yes, there is. The question is, how do I reconcile that with the evidence that's currently in the staff report?
So we have reviewed the fire tower Coastal Commission staff report as well, and our response on this issue is that we still believe that the primary standards found in the Implementation Plan to protect visual resources come from the section in 17.37.020 related to protection of the Highway 1 visual corridor. And so as you'll see in the revised findings, we discuss those specific policies found in that subsection B. You'll note that the last of those policies relates to ensuring that projects within the highway corridor are low, and so they don't intrude on public views, and we believe that is largely duplicative of some of the other sections that were cited in the Coastal Commission report. And so we go ahead and make that specific finding relating to ensuring that public views are protected, for the same reason that the Coastal Commission ultimately found that there was no substantial issue. The same is true with respect to this site, in our observation of the particular site and the story polls indicates that the momentary blockage of the ridgeline is momentary and fleeting. And so those are the types of findings that we've included in the revised packet for your consideration. It's on page 6 of the new materials, under the heading of, where is it? Under the heading of Visual Resource Protection Standards, and then number 5.
Sorry, now you got me. Just so I'm sure I understood it, I thought I read in the findings the statement that this portion of Highway 1 is, in the findings for this project, that the findings proposed for us to adopt say that this area is not part of the scenic resources corridor, in contradiction to what I read in the Coastal Commission staff assessment. Has that been changed, or is that the continuing position that staff is bringing to the Planning Commission?
There's some inconsistencies on this issue, because if you look at the Implementation Plan, it very specifically says that the Highway 1 visual resources are only to apply where it's officially designated corridor, which you don't have in this area. However, the land use policies are more broader than that. And so the approach we've taken here, which is similar to the approach that was taken by the Coastal Commission, is to functionally treat Highway 1 as a visual resource, and to go ahead and look at the issues presented by this project to the visual resources for the traveling public along Highway 1. And I don't believe we make an official finding as to whether or not Highway 1 is a scenic resource, but I'm wrong.
And we can chase that later. One last question, and thank you for your patience, is it the case in our certified local coastal program where there's a conflict between the local coastal program implementation plan and the local coastal program land use plan, that the more protective and the land use plan generally trumps the implementation plan with respect to how we interpret them?
Certainly, but only to the extent that there's a conflict.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hernandez?
So, just to build on that point, in the staff report, I think that one of the specific items was brought out was visual resources 18.37.20, which talks about the visual resources area, but it's actually the upland slope standard, which is 18.37.35. And one wanted to clarify that you've reviewed that portion of it, and your concern with the momentary blockage, you know, that's sort of the position that the city is taking is that it's a momentary blockage and minor relative to the user's experience along the entire ridgeline, or along Highway 1. Subordinate would be the word, I think, that I'm looking for as opposed to minor.
All right, so Sarah just reviewed the findings that were made and presented to you in this revised resolution, the Exhibit A portion, and this, the particular one you cite with respect to upland slopes, I think it's C, finding C, we found that that was, that standard was, again, duplicative of number 5 for 1837030B, and if you could make a finding for 1837030B, number 5, that you would have quite soundly approached what the other standard is looking at in C. We'd encourage you to linger a little bit on this language on page 6, again, number 5, under this set of findings for 1837030B. The analysis that was included in the fire tower report prepared by the Coastal Commission staff provided a lot of guidance for us, it in fact matched our observations and analysis, but it provided some basic construction in terms of how to approach making the finding, and you'll notice that we observed the area with regards to all the things that they were looking at with respect to the fire tower. Is it a long-term obstruction? Is the development in scale and context with the area, and a number of other findings that you'll see in those two paragraphs there.
Commissioner Reddick, any questions from you?
Just to be sure I understand, the concept of momentary view blockage, does that mean we're talking about people in their cars on Highway 1? Yeah, I guess clearly that would constitute the majority of people who'd be involved with this question, although there will be others who will be on foot or on bicycle or something who, for whom the moment would be a little longer. Scott, in the analysis, it says that this project will be compatible with the Poplar Complete Streets project. Would it be curious, given the ill-defined nature of the Poplar project, in what sense will it be compatible?
Well, that's a good question. So, it will be required to pay their fair share of the frontage improvements, you know, along Poplar. The Poplar project hasn't fully been scoped yet, so it's still in the works, and maybe our city engineer might be able to touch upon the status of that project.
Good evening. I'm Alzobzurgenia, city engineer. That's, I just, yeah, I just want to echo Scott's comments. So essentially, what, the way that we're looking at this is we're requesting an in-lug fee from the applicant for the frontage improvements, something that we will be quantifying a little later prior to building permit issuance, and the application of that would be used towards the Poplar Complete Street project as we look at defining that particular scope. And as far as the, what's being proposed by the applicant at this stage, it provides a good segue to future improvements in that the driveway approach itself is asphalt driveway approach, which can be easily removed and modified with the future alignment.
So, the, maybe compatible is not precisely the right word. It is to be not exempt from the fees associated with the project?
And the applicant has agreed to accept the city's design, which may be quite a bit more expensive and sophisticated than our regular engineering standards, so it's a big commitment for them.
Okay, thank you for that. Through the chair. Commissioner Hernandez?
Since our city engineer is here, during the original hearing, the neighbor who I see is also here raised, who is also an engineer, an engineering professional, raised the issue about changes that have been made at this intersection over the years, including the addition of the light, challenges to circulation that have been introduced as a result of that, including delivery trucks that now go down the street. We've also had multiple city council and planning commission meetings where the safety of this intersection has been raised. Is it the city's position that this is currently an exemplar of safety from a pedestrian access perspective?
I wouldn't, I would not state it that it's a safe intersection from that perspective, from a bicycle or a pedestrian perspective. And so as part of the Poplar Complete Street project, that's going to be a very important piece to look closely at as far as going forward and improving that safety aspect there. Yeah, there's a number of things that I have concerns with there.
Thank you. So the second follow-up question is, in the interim, assuming this project is completed in a timely manner, are we going to be in a position where the intersection is actually worse than its current status from a safety perspective? Because the complete street improvements won't be there, the driveway pulls out onto the current crosswalk area. Are you concerned that you're actually going to make, let's call it, an unsafe intersection even less safe with this project until the Complete Streets project goes into effect?
That's, no, that's a very good point. So with what the applicant's proposing to do is actually move the driveway entrances for, that was a lot, most of the comments that we had was about the location of that end, the driveway approach and the width of it. So they've reduced it to the absolute minimum that could be recommended at 10- So they've reduced it to the absolute minimum that could be recommended at 10 feet, and they've moved it as far east as possible without encroaching into the neighboring property. I would be very concerned if this was on the receiving side of the highway. For example, if this was on the south side of the intersection and you had a right-turning movement off of a high-speed facility onto a local street, I would be very concerned at that. But given that this is on the north side and you have slower traffic coming towards the intersection, I'm a little less concerned with that. Now, there are certain improvements that we can look at making, but again, those would be temporary in nature as far as any protections for pedestrians, given that there's no sidewalk, curb, and gutter currently. And given that we don't have the current alignment, I mean, if we had the alignment for the improvements for Poplar, it would be a little different in that we could ask the applicant to make those modifications now. But given that the timing of it, we are a little further behind on that process. It makes it really difficult to request any changes at this stage and make sure that it's consistent with what the future project would look like, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no additional clarifying questions or questions of the applicant, I suggest we open up the public comment period at this time. I've got three cards. I see others standing. Did the applicant want to make a statement or make a presentation? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing this project tonight. Just kind of want to go into a little bit more of what Scott spoke with you about. The previous, the original design, which I was not a part of, was for a single story, and the main issues were that the parking and the access to the parking and the potential not within the garage space parking and maneuverability on the site with a single-story design was problematic, and that the building ended up too close to Poplar, and there was some safety issues with that. So as he mentioned, Paul came to me and with the design for a two-story, which we took to you guys for a study session, and we got some valuable feedback on that. Still, safety was an issue. You recommended that we push the building back four feet, which encroaches a little bit into the maximum building envelope, but it allows the greatest relief off of Poplar and allows us to get a better turnaround so that vehicles can actually turn around on the site before they head back out onto Poplar. There was also some massing and aesthetic suggestions you made. Our original design was more in line with even the building he showed that was a few blocks up on Poplar, which was also a duplex in which the building was pretty monolithic. The second story was close to the same height as the first floor. We actually even had the cantilever that you find on a few projects along a few buildings on the highway there. And we took that in consideration, and pushing the building back gave us, pushed us back into the most widest part of the lot, which had allowed us to reconfigure the building and make it much more aesthetically pleasing. We introduced additional materials and colors to help soften the visual impact of it and created additional roof lines. We also expanded on the landscaping and the fencing that were proposed. As Scott mentioned, we worked with him extensively. We went through numerous submissions and iterations to try and really make sure that we were addressing all the concerns that were addressed at the study session. The building has been, I think the building itself is more proportionally configured. The first floor is about 42% bigger than the footprint of the second floor, so it's more balanced. It's less boxy-looking than the original design. And I just think overall, we've created a much more beneficial project to the neighborhood. It's a much safer condition than what was originally proposed. I look forward to your comments tonight. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Maybe just wondering if it's your architect that you'd answer, that's fine, too. Can you tell me how large the square footage of the upper floor of the duplex is, the upper dwelling?
The living area?
The upper story of the duplex.
Correct. So it's one unit below, one unit over. So that unit is 1,273, I believe?
1,273, thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, we're going to open up the public hearing. I've got four cards here. As mentioned, if you wish to speak, please fill out speaker card. Our first speaker, Carlos Riz.
Good afternoon, oh, good evening now. So I've been here for all the different sessions that have occurred for this property site, and there are still some concerns. As one of the commissioners mentioned, I am a registered civil engineer, and the city engineer mentioned a couple of things that I don't quite agree with. So he's mentioning that the approach on the westbound is not as, the street velocity is less. That's not the case. There's a lot of people that are running to try to get that light. I mean, I live right there in a corner where I can see that traffic, and it is going, I mean, the speed limit's 25. 35 to 45 is an average velocity through that road. So to make it seem like it's less of an issue because it's on the north side of this street and the velocity isn't that high, I don't think it's a correct statement. So last time we were here on that study session, the other thing that was concerning was, I mean, what was sort of briefly talked about is the sidewalks and/or the Poplar proposal that was supposed to be done before any of the considerations were supposed to be done on this lot again. To me, that report hasn't been done. There hasn't been any design for it, but here we are talking about what is going to go in there next. I mean, the concern still is for pedestrians, myself, everybody that's on this street, it's an unsafe place to turn. I've been hit several times because I'm trying to turn into my house. I'm not able to. I submit a request to the city to have a clear, do not, the intersection like there is here on Kelly, so I can turn into my driveway. That has never been addressed by anybody. So there's been multiple times where I'm trying to turn into the street because the street backs up further than Fourth Street, that I'm not able to turn. So I have to go up to Main Street, go around, and come back in. So that is still a concern, that nothing has been improved or anything that will improve that. I mean, the last time as well that I mentioned, I mean, this lot, my lot, is the lowest lot out of that three-lot area. As I mentioned before, you've got drainage coming from the street to my lot. Now I'll have drainage from my neighbor and this new property. The back properties are coming also in. So I know that that drawing showed some drainage, but I don't think it's sufficient enough to take in this year's rain to get rid of all that water. I know this year is not a normal year, but we have to take that into account. That lot also gets the drainage from both Poplar Street and Highway One. How is that being addressed? I know that there is new type of wall, but that water still needs to go somewhere.
Thank you.
I didn't finish, but I guess my time's up.
Next speaker, Ramona Alvarado.
So I'm also the neighbor, my husband Carlos. So I just want to say a couple of quick things.
Can you make sure you're speaking right into the microphone there? Thank you very much.
So a couple of things regarding that I want to address is the scenic route. So we actually are on the scenic route. We received a letter from the city saying we are on the scenic route, so I just want that on the record. I also think the house size, based on the surrounding homes, is very large, and I think if we approve this project as is right now, you're setting a precedence for future homes to be built that size on Highway One. So I'd hate to see a precedence for that set. I'm not opposed to a house going into this lot. I'm opposed to the size that's going in, and I know our street is zoned for duplexes, but I just don't think this property can hold a duplex. And I think by asking for the different exceptions, it's proving that point. So I think a smaller, single-family home would accommodate that property better. Also, I'd like to mention the access into the property was also discussed in previous meetings, that they would only be able to turn right into the property. So if they're only able to turn right, that means they're going to have to go through Filbert, come through the other neighborhood streets, up in front of our property to get into their property. So you're also creating more traffic in the neighborhood when we've already seen an increase of traffic due to the traffic light. We get the buses now through our street. We get the commuter traffic through our street. Everybody that's trying to get onto Highway One now comes through Poplar because we have the light. So there is additional traffic, and it is turning right and left. It's not just turning or going straight. So there is additional traffic, and like my husband said, there are many times that we cannot make the left-hand turn into our driveway, and we have to pass the home, make a U-turn, and come back to make the right-hand turn into our driveway. So we have a problem. We're not even on the, right on the highway like this property is going to be. So that also needs to really be a consideration on how this property enters and exits, and the additional traffic that they're going to put into the rest of the neighborhood. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Tom Carey.
Good evening, Tom Carey. I just want to state my full support on this project. I agree with staff and the recommendations, and I hope it passes. I own various duplexes that I've built myself in that area on the highway. Ones are single-story, two-stories, a single-story. I think it's on Spruce. I think each unit's around 1,250 each, just to give you an idea. I own also, I favor, because in Poplar, we have some lots that are all zoned R2. I plan on, in the future, to build duplex units on those. This city has a housing problem. I never realized that because on these other streets, I built homes that were zoned for duplex, and I built single-family. And when I come to think about it now, back then, there wasn't a rental property that it has now in Half Moon Bay. And basically, that's what I'm looking at, and I favor the project. It looks good. He's a good builder. He's building it to rent. He's had a family tragedy, not able to come here, his son. So basically, I hope people start building some rental units here in this town. This is what this town needs. It doesn't have. I get four to five calls a month at my office, unsolicited, looking for rentals. Not looking for places to build. Do you have any more units coming onboard? And that's what this town should be looking at. It needs it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker and the last speaker card I have for this item is Carrie Burke.
Good evening, Chairman Holt, members of the commission. I'm Carrie Burke, and when I first came to live in Half Moon Bay 30-plus years ago, I lived in this neighborhood on Spruce, in a substandard lot, a smaller house on a substandard lot. And also now, I currently live just a few blocks away at Amesport. I love living in this neighborhood, and one of the concerns I've always had for this neighborhood is that we don't have enough duplexes. It's just essential that we can build out this kind of limited area that we have in this area, and then at Puyol Shitas Park, it's really the only R2 zoning that we have, and we really need to be able to utilize this type of housing option for folks. And I agree with the last speaker that we are deficient in our rental units and that this would suffice. I know that the landowner has taken great care to listen to the comments of the previous commission, and really, this design has strived to meet so many elements that they can. I also believe that the turnaround that they've provided will help assist on the safety issue of the access to the site, and I just feel that this project is an excellent way of dealing with a challenging site, but I do feel that it does fit a need, and we do need to have some private individuals step up and create some affordable rental housing for Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker cards, so I'm not seeing anybody else dropping up to speak. I'm going to close the public comment period. I will just note, we did have one other item, a public comment that was submitted in writing from Dr. Maureen Murphy, who lives at 632 Metzger, expressing similar concerns that we've heard tonight about traffic and other items and concerns about the project. So I think we should each have copies of that. So with that, we can bring it over to Commissioner Discussion. Before we do, I just wanted to ask one question of staff. Looking through some of the summary of the last study session and the project that was originally heard back in, whatever, 2016, the single-family house, it seems that the direction that was given at that time was an indication from the planning commission, concern about the footprint of the single-story duplex, and an indication that consideration of variances and exceptions would be supportive if they considered a two-story house. Is that a correct statement, your understanding of what happened at that time?
Yes, that's correct. So the commission did, you know, suggest, you know, pursuing the option of requesting a variance or parking exception.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll bring it back over to Commissioner Discussion. Commissioner Hernandez?
Well, I was at that original 2016 hearing, so I think if we go back, this is a very tricky lot. It's a known, when the applicant bought the property, I think he was aware of the challenges associated with this property. I would like to commend the applicant and his designer for, and the city, for some of the safety improvements that have been made, some of the design improvements that have been made, the drainage improvements that have been made. I think that those comments, you know, those things have been incorporated. I will point out that the reason why we denied the project at the second hearing was because the applicant ignored our previous feedback and comments. So the reason why we're here is because this is a tricky lot, and there are a lot of challenges. I'm struck by two things. The first one is the safety. I've had the benefit of walking my kids to school through this intersection for the last nine years. I've probably made 2,000 trips, at least 2,000 trips, through that intersection. I've been hit, almost been hit by cars multiple times. I've seen car accidents at intersections multiple times. I've seen Mr. Ruiz almost get clipped at least once. And my fellow commissioner, Sarah Polgar, has almost been hit on her bike at that intersection as well. So I think to the city engineer's perspective, this intersection has many issues associated with it. In the previous hearings that I've been a part of, I was pretty clear in my feedback that we needed to very clearly address the safety issues around this intersection as part of this project. that we needed to very clearly address the safety issues around this intersection as part of this project. I'm concerned that we haven't properly done that here, and we're kind of kicking the can forward to future improvements that are going to be made. And I don't see any temporary proposals that fully address or adequately address those safety concerns around this intersection. The second thing I'm struck by, while I appreciate the design effort that's gone into this, when I look at the story polls, I am concerned about the mass of the project. Yes, there was some feedback provided about going towards a two-story building, and some also feedback around variances around parking, feedback that was provided around that. I'm pretty supportive of those types of things if other findings can be met. And I'm really concerned that findings about this property fitting in to the neighborhood are not adequately met. There are other duplexes nearby that are of a similar scale and a similar height, but they're not nearly as close to the highway. So I'm of two minds here, that there are precedents for similar-sized structures. On the other hand, this definitely has some challenges with the finding that this fits in. I'm also concerned about the momentary position of the city. Again, as somebody who's made 2,000 pedestrian trips along this area, you know, this structure dominates the view. If you're walking across the crown, it dominates the view of the ridgeline. And the, so I have, I have a challenge accommodating the findings that this actually fits in. So I'll pause there, but that's my initial feedback.
Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin or Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I, excuse me. I wasn't a part of the Planning Commission during these earlier processes, but from where I sit, I want to applaud the applicant and staff and the previous commission for the process that has been at work here. Clearly, it is a challenging location to build, to build a house of any kind, and it seems like some real improvements have been made there. I think the, the, the space for the three-point turns that the cars residing at this place is essential, is critical for safety there. I'm very aware of the fact that our, the city does have a housing crisis. We need to be aggressive about looking at ways of solving that. I think I'm of a mind that even though this is a challenging location, that the amount of traffic we'd be adding to the circulation here is not going to, is not going to make an appreciable difference in the, in the safety that exists and the safety improvements that we need there. Yeah, I also have doubts about the, the height that we see, especially in this rendition here. I do understand the, the issue about the momentary view blockage, but as Commissioner Hernandez points out, sometimes people are exposed to more than just the moment. I think with all those concerns, given my, my desire to do something for the, for our housing shortage, I'd be, I'd be motivated to support this with the improvements that the applicant and staff and the, and the previous commission have made over the last couple of years.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Benjamin?
So, great, great perspectives from both of my colleagues, and I'll, I'll look forward to the chair's, the chair's perspective on this, too. I think that one of the challenges with the way that we're, we were thinking about this project is though we have to improve it precisely as it's proposed, or we have to go back to a single dwelling. And that's one of the reasons that I asked about the size of the upper, upper floor. While there were many angles from which the building protruded, the protrusion itself was not that large. It wasn't, it wasn't like the entire upper story felt like it was occupying. And I'm, I'm wondering whether we could achieve, I'm sorry, I'm wondering whether we can drive down the protrusion, resolve the protrusion issue by removing some of the area off of the upper floor, the same way we articulate facades and buildings and other sites to address visual resource issues. The staff report probably, or the findings, probably ought to make some statement affirming that this is indeed in a scenic resource area. We've been, our regulations require us to, sorry, the CCNR, the California Code of Regulations, require us to be guided by the insights we get from the Coastal Commission. That doesn't mean we always have to agree with it, but we need to at least understand it. And in this case, I don't feel like the findings with respect, the evidence with respect to seven dash one do that. And I, I'm going to be looking for a change there. I also think we need to say something about consistency with LCP policy seven dash ten. That's the policy of our local coastal program that precludes structures that protrude up into the ridgeline. Once again, the Coastal Commission has given us guidance that they view momentary protrusions as not creating a substantial issue, so there's probably a way we can accommodate something. The way the light posts, for example, in this picture, work. It is true that there are other houses in this area that protrude. I don't know if they were built before the Coastal Act was established and our LCP was certified. So I'm not sure that that's the appropriate basis for deciding about that. And finally, I, I do understand and appreciate the concerns that have been raised by several speakers with respect to the value of duplexes, with respect to the city's housing needs. And I also appreciate the need for affordable housing. I should note in passing that I believe these are market rate. There's not a restriction with respect to affordability here. So what makes it affordable may well be making it a bit smaller. So it seems to me that I should stop here with respect to the safety concerns that were raised. Most of the safety concerns, for example, with respect to the total amount of traffic, I can see the argument that it may not be cumulatively significant. I do think that there's a qualitative issue with respect to the introduction of new cars coming into that intersection. And I, I'm not a good enough reader of architectural plans to know, and I'm sure staff will let me know, that those cars aren't going to be blind to the extent that traffic could be roaring up Poplar to beat the light and then be surprised by a car turning out. I'm, I'm sure that we wouldn't have let that happen. So that's, that's kind of where I am right now. Oh, and with respect to drainage, I noted that the draft program talks about 50-gallon rain barrels in various locations, and I don't know the extent to which that's sufficient to maintain a 10-year storm on site. It would be good to know that. I think that's the standard that we often use.
Okay, great. So, so I share a lot of the, a lot of the comments and concerns. I think, understanding just from the get-go, yes, this is a difficult lot. Yes, the intersection is unsafe. I've ridden bikes through here with my kids many times, and I'd probably be more inclined to jaywalk up at Myrtle than I would to actually go through Poplar sometimes. And so, so with that said, I think those, those statements are all true. I would much prefer to have the Poplar Complete Streets design and all that in place and everything else to be able to sort of look at how this, this conforms. I think that would, you know, that's, that would be ideal. But I also have some respect for the process. This applicant came before, followed the direction of the Planning Commission during the denial to look at a two-story building, came to a study session, incorporated a lot of the feedbacks that the Planning Commission had. And so, so I'm, while I appreciate the efforts to try to limit some of the, the second story, I don't, I don't want to play, you know, backseat architect here. And, and I'd have concerns about limiting the second-story unit too much, because I do also share the concern about housing in the community. This is R2 zoning in the downtown core. That's a core goal of the general plan, is to increase housing stock in that area. So, and I think a primary concern to me are folks like teachers and young families. And a 1,200 unit, 1,200 square foot unit is not necessarily all that big. So for a family, that's, that's an appropriate size. So I would be concerned about trying to shrink that too much. That would sort of maybe impact our ability to, you know, actually house families in this area. Well, I share the concerns about safety and certainly share the concerns about speed on the road. You know, I'm, I'm also somewhat of the belief that, you know, more along the street can actually reduce some of that. I think some of the condition that makes people sort of run for the light and others is that they have sort of a clear view, and those lots are open on each side. And, and I think just the more activity that's almost there just inherently makes people try to slow down and, and respect it as a neighborhood street. So to some degree, I can see the benefit of having a house there. So, so with that said, I, I, I feel comfortable that the, the design input is, is, as far as I'm willing to give input on, I would certainly be willing to defer to staff if the project, if they felt the project would benefit from additional review on that. But, but like I say, I feel comfortable there. The safety elements, like I say, I think, I think I would, like I say, in a perfect world, the Poplar Complete Streets project would be in, but that's moving forward. This project would be contributing to making that happen, which I think is a good thing. And, and I think ultimately, there can be some benefits there. And then in terms of the visual impacts, I agree with staff. It's momentary and fleeting. I think, I think the, the ridgeline impacts while, you know, they are fleeting. Or while they, if you are on foot or bike, it's, it is less than momentary, but, but you are in a neighborhood. And, and that's, that's kind of the nature of it. So, so I really defer on the, the benefits of providing, providing more housing in our downtown core and making the best use of a, of a difficult space. So that's where I'm at. So with that, I would welcome staff's responses to any of the comments you've heard.
Be happy to. We'll start with, I think, the easiest one. The rain barrels are not proposed to be the entire stormwater management system. They are in addition to the vegetated swale, which the city engineer will review in calculations and details for, should this move forward into building permit, but there is adequate space for complying with that stormwater retention standard that you cited. So they're just trying to do another thing with the rain barrels. With regards to complete streets, I just didn't get a chance earlier to make a couple notes about the types of improvements that we would expect to see on a Highway One intersection. The Highway One South and the Highway One North projects that have come through the commission both included the kinds of improvements that reflect on best practices for pedestrian and bicycle access. They have realigned and conformed the corner radiuses in such a manner to require cars to turn more slowly around the corners. It shortens crossing distance. It provides for more space for pedestrians to wait on a sidewalk in a visible location. Both of those projects are really good examples of what we would expect to happen here. And when the staff report makes references to conforming to that, one of the things we looked at was making sure that there was adequate room to do those kinds of improvements, and that the grades were going to accommodate that as well, because we have a lot of grade changes between Highway One and adjacent properties. So those, those are things that we took into consideration. Yes, we would love to have shown a conformed plan at this point in time, but, but we're not ready for that. But that's, those are the kinds of things we anticipated and that you have seen before.
Just Jill, on that, can I just ask, on those two projects, I mean, we're in a, a planning phase on the Complete Streets project, and I know we move forward on Highway One, but talk about implementation. How long of a period would it be that we would have a, potentially a house in this area? And, you know, do we just have a plan sitting on a shelf, or are those improvements that you're speaking to actually going to be implemented?
So I'm going to let City Engineer Marzarini note a little bit more about schedule, but, but I do want to say that there could be a, a number of temporary barrier types of solutions, pylons or other things that could be implemented during a transition period if there needs to be one. We also don't know the intention of the applicant in terms of their timeline for, for proceeding with this project.
With, with regards to the Poplar Complete Street project, we, we just have, we just authorized a contract for environmental and design services. And so we're looking at the next 12 months as far as the design and environmental process to move forward. And then the earliest we would be into construction would be, I'd say, if we start, okay, at summer of 2020 would be the soonest we would start for that complete street component, although we do have some funding gaps that we're still looking at filling. But I would echo Jill's comments regarding the, the temporary improvements. I think there are certain things we can look at, requesting the applicant to do. I know that in the past, I believe in the past application, there was a discussion of a raised median on Poplar up to the intersection to prohibit that left-turn movement from northbound traffic, making the right on Poplar, making a left onto the site, or vice versa, having the property owner coming south and turning eastbound on a Poplar. So there are definitely certain improvements that we, we will be requesting during the building permit phase that would, that would help protect the applicant as well as the users of the roadway. There, there are other alternatives. We kind of went back and forth on the implementation of the corner improvements. We could, we could have requested, and the applicants are already on board with paying for these improvements. We could, we could actually ask the applicant to build it as part of the improvement of the project, and then the city would have to look at tying into that. It would, it would tie our hands to a certain extent. We would have opportunity to look at it, but without knowing the entirety of the, of the intersection improvements, it's, it makes it a little bit challenging to, to implement, but certainly that's, that's an option that we could.
About a sort of do-not-block striping, something that would provide access into, into his driveway, would that be something that's even feasible, possible, or something that could be considered as part of those interim improvements? Or would there even be benefit to that, to the city?
We, we could, we could certainly look at that. The only, the concern I have is, one is enforcement of those. I mean, we're proposing, we have those on our, on the, on the highways, 92 and Highway One, and without enforcement, folks are blocking it anyways.
I, I was more referring to, we have on Kelly Street for turning into the gas station there. There's a striping on Kelly Street that's, yeah.
So, you're right. So what I'm saying is, we can certainly, we can certainly implement something like that, given the proximity to the intersection. Their enforcement would still be a challenge, but yeah, we can absolutely look at implementing that, and we can do that as part of this project.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jill.
All right, that was two. Wanted to confirm for the record, just because I think it's important. That's right, these are proposed-to-be-market-rate units. That said, what we have found with duplexes is that this is that whole category of missing metal housing. It's an excellent type of housing in Half Moon Bay for a more affordable housing in it, just by design, and frankly, by ownership type. It also It also is a little bit smaller and so the units tend to be a little bit more affordable in that way. And of course, this one has sustainability measures with the solar panels and so the kinds of things that may cost a home renter more, such as their electricity and other kinds of bills would be reduced and that, that helps with affordability as well. Duplexes are considered one of the strategies in Half Moon Bay because we really don't have a lot of sites for larger multifamily development to, to address the housing need. We want to spend a minute talking about some of the policies that were cited and also about protected views to make sure folks understand. This is a rendering that the applicant has provided for, just for the sake of you really seeing the context of the project. This is not presented to you though as a view that is specifically protected. This is, the line of sight is from Poplar. Poplar is not a designated coastal access route and so it is not cited in the LCP. So when we're talking tonight about the Coastal Commission's statements with regards to the fire tower project and what we see in our policies and our zoning code, this one doesn't come up. It may come up later in your new, in your new coastal program, but it, that is not adopted. This view is protected from the context of the fire tower perspective, if, if we were to take that, that direction from the Coastal Commission's statement there. And so that is, this type of view is what we were focused on. And of course, the closer you get to it, the, the more, you know, it's the perspective, it, it gets taller and we have that moment where we have some occlusion of, of the hill ridge line. In the other direction, it was really minimal because of the, in, in fact, in both locations, there's a lot of other treescape and/or roof lines here and there that, that pop up and move in and out of the view. And we noticed that to be consistent up and down the highway. There aren't a lot of sites left open like this, but there are a couple left. So it's important to just acknowledge that. We know that. We, we assume that you've, you've noticed that as well in your work and looking around this property. But we're focused on this Highway One, North and South. Regarding land use plan policies from Chapter Seven, which is scenic and visual resources of your 1996 document, seven dash one is a policy that you've made this finding many, many times with regards to projects that are within 200 feet of the highway or 200 yards, excuse me, of, of Highway One, which is specifically that Highway One is, is not a designated scenic highway within the city limits of Half Moon Bay. We added some notes often about other projects where we note how visible the project is and what kinds of frontage improvements or other things will be seen by the project. In this case, we've added those additional findings for your consideration that we spoke about earlier tonight. And we could, if you're interested in pursuing this, we could provide some conforming language for this policy seven dash one compliance statement. Our city attorney can, can help us do that pretty quickly. Now regarding policy seven 10, we would be concerned about citing that because it very specifically defines the location of the properties that are addressed by this policy. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the policy opens with new development on upland slopes. The development itself is specifically on the upland slope. It isn't just that you can see it between the road and the upland slope. It's new development on upland slopes visible from Highway One and Highway 92 as indicated on the visual resources overlay map. And the map's visual resources for this area show some protected areas that are specifically cited, such as Carter Hill and other hills and elevations above the 160-foot contour line. So we don't believe that seven 10 applies to this project.
Commissioner Hernandez, do you have a question?
Thank you, Jill, for the comments and feedback. Appreciate all the thought that goes into that. I've commented on policy seven 10 before and the interpretation. I respectfully disagree with the city's position. And also the language, the implementation language is very clear that the view of the ridgeline is the important criteria, specifically going to 18.37.25. So I, I just, I'll just put it on the record that I just disagree with, with, and I, I understand the city's position.
We want to clarify one thing between the zoning and the land use plan and I just let our city attorney have a moment to, to catch up.
So I believe you're speaking about 18.37.035 and the specific subsection C, which reads "Structures should be cited so as not to intrude or project above the ridgeline skyline as seen from Highway One and 92." The important part about this section is that it is found under a category called upland slope standards and that relates very specifically to section seven dash 10 in the land use plan, which as we've just discussed, applies to the upland slope areas of the city. And I, I see that you still continue to disagree, but that is the city's perspective from, from the record.
So what we did, we split the difference in the document that we presented to you because seven 10 is real clear that it's about on upland slopes. But the zoning code section that the Coastal Commission utilized in their analysis of the fire tower, we did too. We added that in. So the zoning piece of it specifically was added in. I don't believe that the Coastal Commission assessment of the fire tower changed our interpretation of policy seven 10. I think it was more about that specific citation that our city attorney just, just put forth.
Mr. Benjamin.
Thank you. So I want to think about what you said about seven 10. Thank you for pointing that out. I'll just say that our zoning ordinance in its definition section is crystal clear that the titles are for organization. They have absolutely no qualifying limitations whatsoever. And the policy section starts with the words "any development." If it said "any development on the upland slopes," I would follow the reasoning that you, that you offer and I can see the attraction of it. But I'm not sold on it and I'm not, I'm pretty sure the Coastal Commission wasn't sold on it. So I think we need to follow their, their thought process. But I think 1735 is sufficient to, with respect, I think more specifically, seven, 18.37.035. Is it? Just want to find the right one here. C. Quick reader. And I, I, I should re, I should review the, the draft language with respect to that. I appreciate that you're trying to split the difference and accommodate their thinking. I didn't feel like we had the difference split on my reading of the area in a way that's consistent with the Coastal Commission's view that it is indeed protected, that it's regarded as within the scenic corridor. And maybe I misread it, but I'm, you know, their guidance is pretty straightforward and I'm inclined to follow it at this point.
We can certainly modify the section under seven, policy seven one on page two of the findings to make that more clear.
Thank you. So let's talk about momentary and trying to understand if we weren't going to cite seven dash 10 and we were going to cite seventeen, sorry, 18.37.035C that we just talked about, we need to weave in this idea that we can see from this picture. And again, as the community development director points out, as you get closer, that intrusion is bigger, but still momentary. You know, the, the language of the Coastal Commission findings on the fire tower were that it was, it was momentary and consistent with the intention, I think. And so I don't want to rush off because folks have concern about this. I want you to have a chance to think through this since it's conceivable that the project could be appealed. I wonder if a recess is in order, maybe after we've gotten the rest of the stuff, for them to have a chance to do the drafting. And, and with, and maybe just follow on the affordability question. I appreciate the clarification that it's market rate. I also appreciate, as I said earlier, the value of providing multi-housing. I think that was well stated by the members of the public who spoke. Thank you, applicant, Mr. Carey, Ms. Burke and others for pointing that out. And I understand that it would be small for families if it was made still smaller, but it is true that people who are living, singles also need affordable housing. So I think it could, an argument could be made that there are multiple types of affordable housing and the diversity might not be a bad thing either.
I would agree and my response to that would be that we have a, a pretty progressive accessory dwelling unit ordinance that allows accessory dwelling units up to 800 square feet. So if we're pushing 1,200 square feet down and we've got ADUs at 800 square feet, essentially what you're doing is, you know, maybe approving a glorified ADU.
Or ADU-ifying it, I see.
So, so yeah, I heard Commissioner Benjamin's recommendation for a recess to play with some language, but I kind of want to take the temperature of the commission and see where we're at. And maybe if we, yeah, I've, I've made my position clear. Would you be comfortable moving forward with the language that you had suggested if we're able to work since that?
Are you talking to me?
I am.
I'm sorry.
You suggested the recess.
I'd like to see the language so I can know the answer to that question.
Okay, fair enough. Commissioner Hernandez, do you want to go for a recess or do you have anything else you want to say now?
I mean, I'm fine with the resource. I, as the project is laid out, I'm, I'm concerned from an architectural review perspective that it's not conforming with the findings. So my position's not going to change.
Okay, fair enough. With that, I'll take a five minute, 10 minute? Let's go for a 10 minute. All right. 10 minute recess, thank you. Continuing to discuss 555 Poplar. Staff, do you have anything to report?
So per your instructions, we have made some additional findings, which I would like to read into the record. The first is a modification to the compliance statement under policy seven dash one. I'm going to read this in its entirety, the revised version. The subject site is located adjacent to Gabriel Highway, State Highway One. Highway One is not designated as a scenic resource within the city limits of Half Moon Bay. However, Coastal Commission guidance indicates an intent to protect Highway One and views from it as visual resources. The project designs include fencing and landscaping improvements along Highway One frontage and the overall project height conforms to the city's zoning regulations. Additional findings related to visual resources are found under the section entitled Visual Resource Protection Standards. And then under the Visual Resource Protection Standards finding, we will be adding a new section, which states, "Per Section 18.37.035, Upland Slope Standard C." And I pulled this up real quick. I have it. Structures shall be cited so as to not intrude or project above the ridgeline skyline as seen from Highway One and, highways one and 92. For compliance, we will state, "While the proposed project is not located on an upland slope, portions of the project project above the ridgeline and skyline as seen from Highway One. However, the proposed project appears only in a fleeting manner for northbound drivers and will, will remain subordinate to the ridgeline for southbound drivers as described further above under subsection five." Those are the modifications we propose to address.
So I'm thinking, and I just wanted to add in the record while we were in recess, I wanted to share a brief conversation in which I was recounting what I heard on the Coastal Commission's hearing on the fire protection tower, which was that they did acknowledge that the structure protruded. So it, it seems to me that they were recognizing that it was possible for some protrusion to occur and still be consistent with the spirit of these, this policy and this ordinance. I, you know, I don't know how they get to being consistent with the letter of it, but it is what they decided. And I think we're bound by that guidance, or at least I feel bound by that guidance. Would it be appropriate to reference that?
We could certainly-
Thank you.
Do that, Sean.
If we can do that, then I'm going to be okay with this. With respect to the traffic problem, Mr. Ruiz and his wife described, I just wanted to get clarification because there was a brief discussion at the commission about maybe temporary barricades or some kind of construction on the site. I want to be sure I understand the objectives. Was it to calm traffic or was it to leave a space open so he could make turns into his property? Are those consistent? Can, you know, is there a way to achieve those goals as a condition of the project?
My thought was just, was both. The potential for blockage of his ingress into his property could result in a ripple effect of other folks sort of backing up behind him. That would, you know, impact circulation of traffic. That was what was going through my mind. I don't, I don't know. I would leave it up to city engineer to really decide if that's an appropriate sort of thing to include in there. I was just curious if that was something that was in the suite of sort of temporary improvements that might provide some near-term relief.
I, I would sort of take away the same thing. Any project here to me has to have interim or temporary improvements for ingress and egress to both sites, the neighbor site as well as the new project. And I would give the city engineer wide latitude to put those in place, especially for pedestrian access and bicycle circulation at that intersection as a temporary means until the longer-term projects put in place. I'd hate to see the city spend tens of thousands of dollars on permanent concrete that it's ultimately going to rip out. That would be a waste. But there are plenty of temporary things. The city engineer and the many resources he has at his disposal, can, he can put to bear to, to address that. So I think that would be totally appropriate. But I would, I would add a condition of approval that temporary or interim improvements be added to this project until the complete streets is finalized.
Yeah, I, what I took from what, what Maz, what the city engineer was, was saying, if, if he has latitude to work with the applicant on that, the best case solution is something that ends up being quite compatible and efficient in terms of transitioning into the final complete streets project.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Benjamin, yes.
Yeah, I, if, if it's intermittent, happens to also work permanently, that's fine. If it's intermittent, doesn't, that's, that's okay with me too. Yeah, would it be okay to ask if staff has any reservations about incorporating some condition like that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Staff like to respond? Thoughts on a condition regarding any interim or temporary improvements?
We're comfortable doing that. There's, there's a lot of ways to, to address that condition. Yes, thanks.
I think I'm ready.
I am ready to entertain a motion anytime ready, if somebody wants to make one.
So I move that we approve the resolution next in order with the modification that we incorporate the analysis evidence finding section that was read into the record by the deputy city attorney, and the additional language that we discussed that she agreed we could incorporate to reflect the Coastal Commission guidance with respect to the acceptability of momentary obstruction.
Sure. If you'd like, I can read that language right now. Prepared it.
Go for it.
Okay. Similar analysis of intrusion of new development into views of the ridgeline from Highway 1 was completed by Coastal Commission staff regarding the fire training tower, and this would be added to subsection 5 on page 6.
Yes, so let me start my motion again for clarity.
Apologies.
That's okay, it's good, good, good to get it. So now that it's all in the record, I move that we approve the resolution next in order with the amendments to the conditions that were read into the record by the deputy city attorney, and further that a condition be imposed on the project to require interim improvements to achieve safe entrance and egress for this parcel and the adjacent parcel, and provide for safe pedestrian and biking until the complete streets are implemented for this area.
Okay, you have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, with that, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And there we have it. Approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item, one be an application for coastal development appropriate, an architectural review for McDonald's.
This, this project involves the facade upgrade and new signs to the existing restaurants in the Strawflower Shopping Center. And so, little background, this project was, or the existing building itself, first opened in 1984. And then, back in September of 2007, the planning commission reviewed a similar project.
Make sure you speak in the mic, Scott.
Similar project back in 2007 for a facade upgrade in addition. Mostly it was the, the play area in the existing restaurant that included the addition. So part of that was a reciprocal parking agreement was recorded that allowed for the additional square footage in relation to the required off-street parking spaces. And the planning, the planning commission approved that, and it was subsequently upgraded. Let's see, this time around, their, the overall mass and bulk of the building would actually decrease a bit. Removing the tower element, many of the immense art roofs, and going with more of a contemporary design building. Here's an aerial photograph of the site, and site plan. Couple of additional items that are included with the project include extending the existing sidewalk that currently ends here. Included with the project would be extending it all the way around, and then providing a accessible ADA access to the restaurant itself. A new electric vehicle charger would also be installed, as well as additional stormwater Landscape plan was also submitted. I don't know if the commissioners have had a chance to notice that a lot of the landscaping through here is degraded from people cutting across, and so all that will be filled in and refurbished as part of this project. Photometric study was also included with the project, showing that, you know, just the lights along the building itself would be included with the facade upgrade. Here's a color material sample for you to take a look at. So the key things for the commission to consider are conformance with the LCP, our sign code, and then compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Now, the project itself, the walls, the walls would not be removed, it would just be more of a change to the facade. And the, similar to the previous project that we reviewed, the visual resource findings have been updated to, and, you know, reference the previous Coastal Commission review of the fire training tower. And we did provide a memorandum that includes the revised resolution. Now, you will notice that within the staff report and integrated into the resolution are findings for the sign program. And included with the sign program is the, the existing monument sign, which would not change out on the highway, as well as three wall signs, and then six signs associated with the drive-through. Normally, 100 square feet of sign area, and three signs would be allowed per sign code. What they're requesting with this, with the sign program is 216 square feet, or 219 square feet. And here are the elevations that include the, the actual wall signs. And another thing to note for the, for the commission, this does equate to less sign area than currently exists on the site. So, these would be internally illuminated channel letters with no raceway. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act for replacement of commercial structures and on-premise signs. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The project architect, as well as the sign designer, are here to answer any questions as well.
Great, thank you very much. I have one question. Typically, on projects that we see and in landscaping, we try to ask for native, native plantings, and I believe we have some policies and goals around that in our LCP. And I noticed in here that we'd be planting new ice plant, and, and just wondering if we could, if staff has had any conversations with them, and if there's potentially other, other species that might be appropriate.
I'd be very comfortable with you adding that to your condition regarding landscaping, should you move forward with this.
So, as Public Health Director Doughty says, everyone's a traffic engineer. And my question with respect to traffic concerns the visibility of the sidewalk as someone is turning into the drive-through lane after they come off of Highway 1, and they wheel around that, that 270-degree, oh, sorry, it's, it's more or less a 90-degree turn, but they're going to be going 180. And I'm just a little concerned about whether there's adequate line of sight, especially with the number of tikes that we have, or people with dogs, or people who aren't familiar with the area, who visit places like this, and whether there's an alternate location. You know, people are going to be much slower when they're in the vicinity of the drive-through lane, of course, but no one's going to walk all the way around to the drive-through lane to cross. What are your thoughts about that?
I'm assuming a separate, separate raise.
So a little background on, on that subject. When the application was originally submitted, there were some discussions on compliance with our complete streets policy, and in relation to pedestrian, and sort of some brainstorming on where, where the most appropriate location for pedestrian access could be. And we, we, we did look at the, the idea of maybe something through here, but arrived on this location because of the grade changes. So this, this, this allows for the, the least amount of grade change. And the project architect may, may be able to, you know, provide some additional background on that if need be, so.
Please feel free, if you have anything to add to that. Just make sure the microphone's on and speak into there clearly.
Good evening, this is Hal Ibrahim with PMDG Architects, where the architects for the, representing McDonald's tonight. With regards to the public, link the public, link the path of travel from the, our site to the trail, we discussed this with Scott at the beginning, and then there is a really high difference in grade between the walk, between the trail itself and our site. In order to install a safe path there, we're going to need to a long pedestrian ramp to run through all this area, you know, and then turn, and then link back. So, yeah, it's, it's going to, it's going to be a long one, and then you're going to have to turn. So that's going to remove a lot of landscape from that area, and it's going to be cost-effective. The, the advantage of adding that sidewalk on the side, this is going to be beneficial to the, to the shopping center as well. In the future, they can easily link to it, and then if, if, if the worry is about the turn, we can, we can just, you know, where the turn, where the circle, circular, we can just go there straight, and then we have like landscape to the edge, and then now this is going to be more protection. With regard to the diagonal one, that's what's existing there in, right now. So, people already going through that, because all that walk, the cross, the crosswalk that hatched, this is all existing all the way to the ramp there, and then, and then landscaped area.
Okay, you've given me a lot to think about, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Hernandez?
So, applaud the design. I like the improvements to the project, and really like the fact that you're thinking about a bicycle path and sidewalks. I've faced the burden of trying to get into that shopping center heading, you know, heading along that path, and you're dropped off into the street. The, are you changing the slope of this area? I mean, when I look at the, the drawings, and I look at the, the map, it looks like the alignment of the crosswalk in your drawings have been moved to the north on the project. I'm, I'm.
No.
Okay.
This is, this is all existing. This is based on a topographic survey done by our surveyor. So, no, we're not changing.
Well, no, no, it's not that. It's, it's, it's just, I'm looking at the design and thinking through, like, your design basically has you going across the crosswalk and going straight onto the sidewalk, if I read the plan correctly. And when I look here, it, it doesn't quite match up, so I'm just.
Are, are, if you look.
Right there.
Yeah, if you, if you look at SP0, do you have sheet SP0? Because SP0 is, is the one matches the survey. So you'll see that that's how it's there right now. It shows the same, same diagonals, yeah. We have not changed the angle of the crosswalk. This side, this side originally get upgraded for ADA, so that, as you see, that there are a, a lot of work have been done, not so far, but when you go to the site, you will see it's, it's not all of it going to be replaced as per the ADA fixes.
You're not making any changes to the parking, right?
No.
So, again, I, I understand a lot of work has gone into this. I, I don't think the alignment lines up to the crosswalk in the drawing. So, I would just ask you, as you go through the implementation process, think about how bikes are going to land on that area, and then continue around, because it's the, you're hitting it at a different angle than what's represented in the drawings. I'm, I've been at that intersection many times, and like, I, unless you knock out the trees, what you have here doesn't, doesn't look like the actual site. So I, again, I would take another look at this. I am very supportive of the project, I just, this doesn't match the alignment of the crosswalk.
Yeah, but it should match. We're not suggesting to tear up that crosswalk, because it appears to be ADA. We have, McDonald's has a third-party cast person that goes and do pre-con, we call it pre-construction inspection report, and because, and then submit to us, and then we base our scope on that report. So, because McDonald will, after the remodel done, has to be 100% ADA inside out, the building and the site plan. So that sidewalk, we are not, it's not part of the scope. So however, the way it is right now, it's, it's going to be the way, we're not touching it, basically.
Okay.
But I'm going to look again and see why it shows like more angled.
My concern is just, you need to make sure you have a landing spot for people who are crossing on bike, they have a little bit of momentum, and because the alignment's off, you're going to be pushing people into the bushes, just, and then you're going to ask them to jog over to the left pretty quickly. So I just, you guys are Maz, and you guys can work this out as an implementation detail, I just think there's something askew here.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin? So, if I read the draft language, reiterate the 7-1, the Policy 7-1 conversation we had earlier. It's different here, because this construction clearly does not impact any mountain, you know, there are no hillside issues, there's no ocean view issues. However, it is within the visual resource area as defined by Policy 7-1. I believe the draft language doesn't say that, and I'd like to correct it the same way we did. Any objection?
We can certainly make the modification to the compliance section of Policy 7-1 for our prior change.
Perfect. And the chair, did I understand, maybe I didn't read the, this part of the policy careful, was that crosswalk raised? Or were you suggesting maybe raising it to slow things down, or? Yes, I thought I heard a passing remark about raised.
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
Did not make that comment.
Okay, never mind then.
Commissioner Reddick, you have any questions?
I don't think I do. The staff report notes that this is a visitor-serving business, and, and is designed to be one of the most affordable restaurants in town. The height of the structure is to be reduced, the amount of the signage is to be reduced, so I, I can't find anything to dislike about it. so I, I can't find anything to dislike about it.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so, so I will open up the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wish to speak? Don't see any, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And so, we'll bring that back to Commissioner discussion. So, I want to second and build off of what Commissioner Hernandez says, I think there's clearly a discrepancy between the plan here and what we're seeing on the aerial. If staff could just give a nod of the head, that, that's a workable solution, and that's something that we're all good with, okay. So, with that, I think, I also heard from staff a willingness to incorporate a condition that would require any new landscaping to be native, and drought tolerant, or that sort of thing, consistent with other plantings in the area. And, and I would just say, having navigated, I'll just take the opportunity, since we're talking about a project somewhat within the Strawflower Center, and I know this isn't necessarily specific to this project, but pedestrian circulation and Strawflower sucks. So, I just want to make that, make that clear. I appreciate the, the improvements here with this sidewalk, because Commissioner Benjamin's comments aside, there's absolutely nothing there now. And to have the trail basically drop you off there, and to try to navigate from Safeway through that gauntlet of a parking lot to get to that, that segment of trail, yeah, it's daunting. But otherwise, yeah, I'm supportive of the project with that.
Want to motion?
Actually, just want to open one other comment up. Would it be possible to, as part of this project, I'm not suggesting we add additional infrastructure, or at least not permanent infrastructure, but would it be possible to, at the terminus of the sidewalk, put in a painted bike path going over to the Starbucks, so that you actually have a complete streets as part of the design? Because right now, there's no, there's nothing that indicates this is a place for bikes, and so you're, you're, you're moving bikes on, if you can have a green sidewalk, some, you know, just something that signals, is the applicant supportive of something like that?
Just like a paint?
Correct.
Yeah, if, if planning will give us the direction, oh, the, I can take it out, take it out to McDonald's. But I don't think it's, it's a big, I mean, I think we can do it.
Is staff supportive of?
How, how far, it's past our parcel, is that what?
If I could add, uh...
Because...
Contained within the parcel, it would be...
Within the parcel, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could, that, that would actually be in, in the adjacent property, that's a separate property owner. They, they, we, we could certainly reach out to the, the shopping center owner, and they have authorized the, the work for the new sidewalk. But just so you know, that, that is the, an adjacent property owner.
So, there's no guarantees that they would be able to make improvements on somebody else's property, is what you're saying?
Correct.
But we could potentially add an aspirational condition that, that might encourage us to all work together to improve the condition there.
One more?
Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. So, just to be clear, the revisions do not change the number of windows in the structure, right?
No.
Okay, right. So, one of my pet peeves with fast food restaurants is that windows often get obstructed by signs, right? You get a window, like this huge, you know, 15-foot by 10-foot's window, and instead of seeing through the window, you see a giant sign for, I don't know, "Have it your way." We'll use something that's not for this particular applicant.
That's their condition.
I realize that we probably can't impose that as a condition, that they never do that here. It would be nice if we could, but as we move forward with our revisions of the sign ordinance, I beseech my colleagues and staff to, to have new sign language that makes that stop, because I think it defeats the purpose of the windows. With that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move the, I move the resolution next in order with the provision that staff and the applicant review the design carefully to assure for the safe passage of bikes as they enter the parcel and approach the, the store, that the alignment works. Second, that staff investigate the opportunity to provide markings on the pavement for travel between the McDonald's and the adjacent tenant within the mall, which is currently the Starbucks, I believe. Third, that the landscaping include native drought tolerant resistant species. And fourth, that the findings in support of consistency with policy seven-dash-one reflect that this is in the visual resource area, because it's within 200 yards of Highway One, but of course, it's not blocking any views of the ocean or the mountains, so the evidence and support is straightforward.
Motion made, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, that's the, that was a, our last public hearing item, we have a director's report.
At the beginning of the meeting, I was going to welcome Sarah, but didn't do that, so you've been working with Sarah Clark all night, and she'll be with us for the rest of the summer. On, let's see here, June 25th, we're planning to have a study session on some additional materials for the land use plan, including the introduction and framework chapter, build-out, and some other discussion topics. We understand that two of our commissioners will be absent, so we want to be really certain that we have the remainder of you, Commissioner Reddick, Vice Chair Benjamin, and we will double-check with Commissioner Polgar. Is, do we have that correct?
I will, I will be out, correct?
Yep.
I will also be out.
Okay, and we can proceed in that manner, and keep you, keep you both updated. On July 9th, we are targeting the Pillar Point RV Park after the fat coastal development permit, as well as some additional new improvements in, along the coastal trail. There's a, a lot of development in that plan, it's pretty exciting to see it, I can't wait to show it to you. It's going to be going through the Harbor District at their next meeting, I believe that's June 19th. Their packet's not out yet, but once that goes out, if you, if you receive that, take a look at that. July 23rd, we plan to have a study session with you regarding a series of zoning amendments that we'll be working on. They're predominantly related to mixed-use development, conformance with housing law, and other, other topics that have come through the city council's discussion of affordable housing, so we're, we will be working with you on that. And also, land use plan, any follow-up that we have from the, the June 25th session. I believe that Commissioner Hernandez is planning to call in to that session, okay, which should be fine. Remembering that August 13th, we're taking a break, August 27th, we know we have an appeal, it's regarding a co-compliance action in Ocean Colony on Greenbrier. There will be other items, I'm sure, ready by that point in time, but we're not queued up yet. I have an update from your last meeting, you ever, you had a really full meeting on May 28th with a wide variety of topics. We did receive what I would call a friendly appeal today regarding the goat grazing project. The concern had to do with some of the comments that you heard during that hearing about wetlands delineations. What we recognized during that meeting was, from the perspective of the land use plan update, we really needed a fresh delineation of Glencrey in consideration of the, the work that we'd been contemplating and, and planning for the upper portion of that project. So, we went ahead, and that, that whole property's being delineated now for wetlands. And on Thursday and Friday last week, the biologists were out there all day long, and they have found several potential wetland areas that they're finishing up their work on, and we will have a, a good-looking map pretty soon, and we'll, we'll share it with you. And we will share it with our appellant, who's very interested in what this bears to bring in from their perspective. Their short-term interest in it is more about the goat grazing project, but you will see it with the land use plan. So, just an FYI. City Council, I just encourage you, if you can, attend the July 16th session for an affordable housing study session item. I'll give you more information about that as it firms up. We're trying to get a, a nice, big slice of their agenda, because we have about seven things we want to present to them, along with our, we've, we've hired a housing consultant who's been working with staff, and we would also have Sarah with us, who is able to provide a lot of guidance regarding housing law. The topics range from a discussion of community land trusts, how to use the Affordable Housing Fund, revisiting and, and moving forward with respect to the tenant protection measures that we've been working on. Giving the council an overview of the draft, the draft land use plan with respect to the housing strategies that it contains, those have been, of course, presented to you when that development chapter came out quite some time ago now. We would also present an overview of the zoning amendments that we intend to bring through you, through the, through the Planning Commission, and update regarding the status of Measure D allocations, and some other thoughts about Measure D, as well as an update on state legislature, because that has been such an active environment with respect to housing. And some of the, some of the measures have been set aside, and others are still bumping through the process, so we're, we continue to track those and try to figure out how they, they may or may not intersect with Half Moon Bay. Community Development Director hearing, the next one, will be June 26th, and it happens to be two items, they're both on the 400 block of Correa Street, and they're both new houses. So, that will be a convenient hearing for people who care about Correa Street to come to and, and see a couple items. Also note that your staff here, engineering, and also city manager staff who works on our parks programs, there are three parks projects that are in different phases of community engagement and park design, and we're spending quite a bit of time on them. You're going to see all three of them at some point for coastal development permits and CQ review. You already know about Popper Gateways, I think you know about Carter Park, and then Frenchman's Creek Park is also going to have some gussying up coming forward pretty soon. So, we'll keep you posted on those, and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
This isn't an item on the hearing, so I'll try to navigate this carefully. With respect to the RV project, as part of the project, I have a question about the, some issues have been raised about the permanent status of some people who stay in the RV parks throughout the city. Like, this is supposed to be a temporary RV park. I wonder, is if part of this project, staff could provide some analysis on that? This is a chance to look at the RV parks.
We will bring what we can to you for the hearing, and we're aware of this topic, and we'll, we'll update you then. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jill, the, sorry if I missed this just now, but the, is there any impact from the Glencrey wetlands delineation on the, on the plan of record to bring the goats in this summer?
I don't think there is. We just need to see where the wetlands are, so that we can have field markers placed to guide the fencing. Pursuant to the Planning Commission's approval of, of that coastal development permit, and of course, you know, Commissioner Benjamin had to recuse himself, but it's fine for him to sit in the room now, because the commission is done with this item. So, yes, and one of, one of your changes to the original staff report, and we recommended it to you, was that the goats be fenced off from what we knew to be the locations of the wetlands, which would be field verified by the biologists at that time. So, having a, a fresh delineation of Glencrey should make that a lot easier to do on that part of the property. The Beechwood wetlands are, are more consistently known, of course, they, they ebb and flow with wet years and dry years. In addition to Glencrey, though, we did, we did do a 150-foot frontage of Beechwood to double-check it, because there were a number of maps that showed different things along that area, so we did that as well.
Well, I know it was discussed that night, but I think the past couple days have certainly raised my fire concerns, so, so I think it's, I think it's, I'm pleased to hear that's able to move forward this summer. With that, moving into Planning Commission Communications. Any to report? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
My second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
So, I hope I made the right decision on that. I had mixed feelings about it. I didn't like the Coastal Commission's decision to begin with, and if they decided differently, I would have decided differently.
I like the way that you guys have done that.
Okay.
Let him go first, I have something for her.